We have the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting of January ninth.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all, any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum? Anybody on the public forum this evening? Nick Finelli, on the subject of curriculum. Welcome, Mr. Finelli.
Thank you. Is it on? Is it on?
It's on.
Alright, thanks. So, I just wanted to first start out by saying thank you to the board members that have shown concern and vocal about the matter of curriculum and supplies. And I just want to continue the conversation about curriculum. I know there was a presentation on January ninth. And as it relates to the science and social studies materials in sixth grade. So, first, it was stated that there were textbooks available. And I just want to set the record straight. There are no textbooks available in sixth grade for social studies or science. There haven't been in many years. That's a fact. It was stated that the district had purchased a science resource and it was presented at the January 2nd faculty meeting. Sorry. So, that is true. But the problem with that is, we teach a half year of science, a half year of social studies. And at that point in time, we were just about, I think you're something wrong with this. Sorry. And at that point in time, we were just about finished with the science curriculum. Also, that wasn't something that was sent up by the teachers or recommended by the teachers. It was something purchased at a central office, as far as I know. And it didn't go through curriculum committee. So, I don't know how much money was spent on it, but I don't think much use was gotten out of it. And to tie in with that, if we're going to rely on technology as part of the curriculum, we have students that do not have Chromebooks still. We have students that have had their Chromebooks damaged and haven't had them replaced. I don't know why. But we need them. We also heard about the BOSI's workshops that were offered, and that there was no interest. So, the way it was explained on January 9th, that there was an offer during a faculty meeting to get kids training and embedded coaching. I didn't recall it. I checked with my colleagues. Nobody else recalled it. I then checked the agendas, and I didn't see it in any of the faculty meeting agendas. So, I don't know where that came from. But, it would be helpful. We would probably take them up on that. There were some BOSI's workshops that were offered on unpacking the science standards. I heard that mentioned on the 9th. There was actually interest in that, and teachers were signed up at both the elementary and the middle school level. And here are the results. The middle school teachers were called and told their session was canceled, and it wasn't rescheduled before the start of the school year. The elementary teachers showed up, they sat there for a half hour, and then they were told their session was canceled. There was no rescheduling before school started. And then I just also need to address a couple comments that were made, that, I know Superintendent Wiles stated something along the lines that she takes exception to the fact that I may have implied that they're withholding materials. So, when I originally came to the board, I never implied that. I wasn't implying anything. I was stating it as a fact, that we've been without texts, we've been without materials for years in those two subjects. I stated as a fact, that I put in writing to both the assistant superintendent and the superintendent over a year ago, that we needed books. I brought a couple documents. I brought the collective bargaining agreement, Article 27 on curriculum committee. I just want to read a few highlighted areas, if I could, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Finelli. Any collective bargaining agreement would be executive session material. We're not permitted to discuss that.
No, no, this is public information. This is on, this is on the internet. This is public information. I'm reading it out loud. Is that okay?
I believe that any, I would want to check that with our attorney, because I don't want to violate any provisions of the collective bargaining agreements, or enter into anything that would assume, that would presume that we are entering into anything with collective bargaining.
But, we're not entering, I'm not bargaining here. I'm not representing anybody but my students and myself. I'm not trying to bargain. What I'm trying to do is quote.
You're just going to quote the section.
I'm just going to quote, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So, Article 27, letter B, I just want to read the first part of that. Because I felt like it was implied during the, during the presentation, that the teachers are supposed to randomly be searching or checking with people in other districts about what they're using, and filling out a form and sending it to the superintendent. But, according to the collective bargaining agreement, and according to Board Policy 8110 and 8340, I don't think that's accurate, and I don't think that's the accepted procedure here. So, letter B says, "There shall be a K-12 curriculum committee under the leadership of the superintendent or her designate." And then it says how many members should be on it. Letter C, "The function of the committee shall be to study and improve the curriculum, and to consider all matters related to curriculum changes, included but not limited to books, supplies, teaching aids, computer software, and other budgetary items." Letter D states, "That the committee shall have regular meetings, once each month during the school year." And that brings me to the fact, that the curriculum committee has met a total of two times in the seven months of this school year, four times in the 10 months of the last school year. Doesn't seem there was much interest in curriculum. "The agenda for any meeting of the committee shall consist of such items as may be proposed in advance of the meeting by the chairperson, or by the majority of either the faculty members or the administration members." So, these are, these are matters that are supposed to be brought to the curriculum committee. Curriculum committee makes decisions, like they did with the reading series. Then we have a presentation with the different publishers and the people that they've, that they've spoken to, that they think might work for us. And then the teachers get involved and give their input, goes to the superintendent, and goes to the board. It just doesn't seem like that's happening in the past couple of years. Letter J states, "The board may initiate program changes on its own. The board may also initiate proposals for curriculum committee review." So, I was just asked that the, that the board would exercise that and start getting involved in reviewing some of the curriculum, because I don't think you're getting all the facts Policy 8110, Board of Ed policy. "There are many resources for curriculum development that exist in our school district, and the instructional staff, under the guidance of the administration, is expected to delve into those resources for possible improvement of the instructional program." So, we're not supposed to be out on our own, our prep time, or after school, or calling other teachers we know in other districts, saying, "Hey, what are you doing? Well, let me fill out a form and send it up to the superintendent." That's board policy. Board Policy 8340, titled textbooks, workbooks. "Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education shall designate the textbooks to be used." So, it has to be recommended first by the superintendent. We can't just do it on our own. So, that's what I have, and I'm open for questions, if you have any, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Finelli. Just one question in reference to the curriculum that you cited in there. So, just so I'm clear on this. You have a curriculum down in the sixth grade for, let's say, science. I'm just going to use that as an example. And you, as a classroom teacher, would you be the one to say, "Hey, I need this, I have this curriculum, this is what I'm going to teach throughout the year"? You're reviewing what you're going to teach throughout the year. And you say, "Well, I might need, I want this textbook for this," or "I want to get this material for this." Would it be fair to say that a classroom teacher would be the one recommending to the principal, like, "This is what I need for, for the classroom"? Or am I askew on that?
Not necessarily. I think the way, I think the way it's supposed to work is, of course, if I had, if I had an idea, I would bring it to my, I would bring it to my principal. But, where would I get the information about the different publishers, and what, what they cover, and how, how complete their program is? You know, for a curriculum to be complete, like, I like to use our reading curriculum, because it is a complete curriculum. It has a text, it has a workbook, it has testing, it has, it has assessments, it has ELL, it has different levels for different readers. So, and it has online resources. Now, that's a curriculum. It has a little bit of everything, it's broken down, and we know which standards are being covered in which lessons. So, to say we have a curriculum, I mean, we, we know what's, what areas are supposed to be taught, but other than that, I don't know that we really have a curriculum map. And in the past, we had two science books, and we had one social studies textbook that we used, and there was a, there was a workbook that went with the, with the social studies text. But the teachers don't really, I mean, as you, as you saw with the January 2nd presentation that we had at our faculty meeting, we had absolutely nothing to do with that science, that science resource that was put in front of us. And nor would we probably have spent the money on it, knowing that there was only a few days left in the, in the semester to use it.
That was just curiosity. I'm going to ask the superintendent to, and assistant superintendent to respond to your inquiries right now.
Alright.
And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to start by talking about textbooks and the adoption of textbooks. So, I think that, from my experience with the 712 teachers, and even in elementary, I do think indeed, that teachers find materials and move materials forward to their principals on what they'd like to use in the classroom. I, as a superintendent, have never been asked to pick out a textbook to provide to teachers or to grade levels. As a matter of fact, I know that my experience with textbook adoption is this, usually it emanates down in the, down in the buildings, with the teachers, goes to their principal, it gets referred to the curriculum committee, we have a form. And on the form, there's specific guidelines where we go through this, and we, we approve it, and then it does come to the board. And actually, I can recall many times, we'll, we'll have the textbook right here for the board to take a look at. So, I think there is a process. I do think that it's a shared responsibility of administration and teachers to find materials that are appropriate, but who better than the teachers, that are working with the students day in and day out? I, I think that if we all decided what materials were going to be used and pushed it down, I think that there'd be some concern about that from the teachers. I think they have the, the knowledge, and I surely respect that, and I think that they do recommend various materials. I want to also just refer back to the beginning of the statement about science half a year and social studies half a year. And just talk about what the schedule has looked like. In the middle school, in sixth grade, and remember, sixth grade's a kind of a self-contained grade level, like the K through 5, in many respects, although it sits in the middle school building. But that being said, the students are in those classes, and they get a double block of ELA and a double block of math, and then a half a year of social studies and a half year of science. That has been the model. The reason why that was moved as a model, is because if you look at our literacy, where we are with literacy and math, not only at the state assessment level, because that is one measure of multiple measures, but you look at the STAR data, that's an area that the school really needed improvement. So, we focused on literacy, and we focused on math. And, I think teachers would tell you, down in the elementary school, that during that period of time, and during that block, there are plenty of, and I believe even the HM program had shared this with us, there are things built into that curriculum that address some of the standards, not all of them. And I do not want my words to be misinterpreted by saying that is enough for science and social studies. I believe that the state objectives on ELA and math, taking away the sixth grade social studies assessment, let mo, let most school district to focus on ELA, you know, literacy and math. That being said, Mr. Urbina Medina and I have had discussions with Mr. Spinelli, I'm going to defer to her for those, and, and did say, "Look, ask your teachers what materials they want. If they want a particular textbook, we'll send it to the curriculum committee, and I'd like you to address the attendance of the curriculum committee, and the meetings that we've had, and canceled, and so forth." Because I, I want to be clear, I'm not interested in being adversarial here, I'm interested in working together with our staff and all of our teachers, to make sure that we continue to improve and we continue to have progress made. We're going to talk about the Chromebooks also now, so when we ordered Chromebooks last year, we had an exiting technology director and a new technology director come in. What I've been told was that many of our special ed classes had purchased technology, there were iPads, and that the number of textbook, the number of Chromebooks that were ordered were less than what we needed in all of the classes. No one was trying to take away Chromebooks, or not give Chromebooks, but there was some technology in those classes. Since Mr. Aponte has started with us, he has identified areas where we were short. We asked him, I believe it was two or three weeks ago, to be sure that additional Chromebooks were ordered. I don't know why they're not there yet. I think we can answer that also. But we, we take very seriously, and we're not trying to withhold, I really want to stress this, the school district is not trying to withhold instructional materials. We're looking for input and recommendations back from the teachers, and I heard there was a good discussion. So, I'm going to defer to Mr. Urbina about any of the other items that, and before I do that, we are looking at a different model, possibly, for social studies and science next year. And I believe Mr. Spinelli was going to share information and get some input back from the teachers. We respect our teaching staff here. We want, I can't imagine if we said, "Use these materials," that would go over well. It has to be a discussion. That is the venue for the curriculum committee. But it does not prohibit anybody from finding materials and enhancing their instruction in their classroom, and we are all about that, and we will support it. Mr. Urbina.
Thank you. Mrs. Urbina?
I'd like to touch, I'd like to touch base on a couple of the points that Mr. Finelli made. And if I leave out anything, Mrs. Wiles, please just let me know. So, with regard to the presentation that was made in January, the January 2nd faculty meeting, that was a presentation on a technology resource, Legends of Learning. The resource was presented to the middle school staff as something to add to their toolbox, using the Chromebooks in the classroom. This was a very engaging platform to present some science content that we thought would be beneficial for teachers, as well as students in the middle school. It was by no means to be used as a standalone. It is not a curriculum, it is a resource. With regard to the science kits, and the opportunity to use the science kits, you would not have found that item on a faculty meeting agenda, because that conversation did not take place in a faculty meeting. That conversation took place, if you recall, Mr. Finelli, in Mrs. Wiles' office, where the proposition was made to have embedded coaching with science kits for the sixth grade, and this was something that you were bringing back to your team, and you followed up with me after, that there was no interest. With regard to the canceled science unpacking sessions, that is absolutely correct. We scheduled two sessions for Summer of Summer of '17. One of them was for K-5, the other for 712. The K-5 session, the teachers did arrive, and the presenter did not attend. There was a family emergency, she did not come. The teachers were paid for one hour of their time, with our apologies. The 712 unpacking session, that should have taken place in August, because the young lady that was providing the PD ended up resigning from BOSI's, there was no August date. And it was not rescheduled for the summer, at that point, summer was over. BOSI's has worked hard this school year to fill that position and get someone in there that's able to facilitate this unpacking of the science standards, and additional sessions have been scheduled throughout the course of the year. Are they enough? No. But they're continuing to add sessions as we move along. With regard to materials requests, or requests for textbooks, when I was the middle school principal, it was not uncommon to have someone come to me and say that they needed 25 copies of this, or they found this resource that they would like to use in their classroom. If it was something that had already been approved and was already in use in their classroom, we're talking about adding additional copies, no problem. That, that purchase is executed seamlessly. If it's a new resource, and something that would be added in, and a potential adoption, it goes through the adoption process that is laid out in, by the Board of Education. The curriculum committee, we had a meeting last week, on Monday. The curriculum committee has met this school year, and the curriculum committee meetings are never fully attended. There are members that, for whatever reason, who have commitments, who have other obligations, cannot make regular attendance at the meetings. The meetings have been canceled twice this year, once for an illness of mine, and once for a snow day of ours. But they are scheduled regularly, and they are the first Monday of the month. Is there anything else that I need?
I just want to also point out, that this past summer, there was a curriculum project for social studies in sixth grade, and I believe two teachers in the sixth grade worked on developing curriculum. It's been brought to our attention that they need more time, and we have no problem with that. I've, I've asked Mr. Spinelli to see if those two teachers are still interested in continuing on, or if there are other teachers that are interested, and that we would surely bring that recommendation to the board, because, as you know, we used to only have curriculum writing in the summertime, but over the last couple of years, we have had projects during the school year. So, I just want to be clear, that there have been, and will continue to be, professional development and curriculum writing moving forward. And that's what I have tonight, regarding this.
Thank you for your responses. Could I just ask Assistant Superintendent Napoli to talk about the Chromebooks first?
Can I, can I respond to Mr. Finelli also? He asked if we had any questions, so I was just wondering. Mr. Finelli, thank you, thank you for coming to speak to us today. As the ranking retired social studies teacher on the board, I've pushed the concerns about no textbooks several times, and, and also expressed my concern that the social studies curriculum in grade six has taken a backseat to ELA and, and math. Having said that, I, I can assure you, that everybody on the board wants to give all of our teachers the necessary materials that are needed, and we've been reassured several times by the superintendent and assistant superintendent, that we can do that. I think we can all agree, that the teachers are the professionals and the experts in the classroom, and I would encourage you to have that dialogue with your building principals, and bring to them forward any wishes that you have, even the opportunity to explore several different textbooks to take a look at, and this way, we can get the materials that we need, because I think we can all agree, the goal is to help the kids the best we can.
That's correct.
So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Fin, Mr. Napoli?
Sure. So, after some time of our technology director, looking at our enrollment, talking to teachers, and computing how many broken devices we have, and how many he actually has in inventory, and how many he's ordered, he has identified that we are 23 short. But that would put us at the exact number, so if two or three devices broke, we'd be short two or three devices in the classroom. And you have to remember that, he has to provide the inventory in a class for the maximum number of students that could be in a class. So, if a class has 26 students, he has to make sure there's, there's at least 26 Chromebooks in that classroom, but there may be an attendance of 23 on any given day, but he has to make sure he's got that many, and our enrollment does change. We did a, a study just today, of how many enrollments we've had this year alone, since July, so I'm going to work with, with Moses to order more than the 23 that we need. He did recently place an order to roll out the touch devices down in the K-12, using the Senator Bonisic grant funds. I think he ordered 80-plus devices, so I'll make sure that he orders 23 plus some more, in case we have failures, or devices disappearing, so...
Do you know when we're going to get them?
I don't. Orders go through pretty quick, so we can get them ordered this week, and then they should be here pretty quick.
Mr. Storey?
So, thank you, Mr. Napoli, and please thank Mr. Aponte for us, because I was at his budget presentation, he did a great job, and I liked what he did as far as going forward. I have a concern, though, that about six weeks ago, I brought this up, and they're still not ordered. So, I want someone to find out why, and I want, I want an answer pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storey. Jody?
Does that 23 include special ed, because I know we are short in special ed? And if it doesn't, can we please make sure all special ed students have them?
Was that K through 12, or is that only the sixth grade? Because the, the 23 is for the middle school.
Nope, then I'm talking, going to the elementary school, where they rolled out last year, and this special ed did not get them.
I, I think that part of the reason why we're short, had to do with some of those devices being deployed in the elementary school, to make sure that those students in the elementary school had them.
Right, but I think there's, there's definitely still special ed classrooms without them, yes.
Can we look into that?
Definitely know that.
By the next meeting? Have an answer for us by the next meeting, please. Thank you. Alright. Alright, we will go on to reports for this evening. Start out by, also, I want to echo thanking Moses Aponte, our IT person there, with his presentation, and also, just thank him, because I was down by the kindergarten wing, and I see that the Chromebooks are in for the teaching staff, and they're getting ready to be deployed, and also, they've got some brand-new, state-of-the-art smartboards down there that he's hooked up. And I know he works very hard, I see him here late at night, 7, 8 o'clock at night, pretty much, just about every night, you know, putting in the time, and we certainly appreciate that on behalf of the board. And again, please extend our thanks to Mr. Aponte for his dedication. And he's very excited about this district, he's excited about the, the technology piece about this district, so I'm looking forward to, you know. Obviously, some of these things happened last year, he's, he's trying to clean up for what happened last year, but we definitely need to make sure, and as we should, that everybody has the appropriate Chromebooks. Also, I'd like to just bring to the board's attention, next, in March, we'll be doing a board retreat, I will get you that date as soon as possible. At the next meeting, we'd like to present the NAACP with a plaque for recognition, for recognition, and as some of you may be aware, it was established, actually, yesterday, February 12th, in 1909. So, it's been some hundred and some years that the NAACP's been established. We certainly want to recognize the efforts that this organization has put forth. Back in 1909, W.E.B. Du Bois, and several of his followers, established this organization. And certainly, it's been a worthwhile organization over the last hundred years. And in 1940, just a note, Thurgood Marshall kept the organization going, added a renewed injection into it, and he actually later became Supreme Court Justice for the United States. So, we certainly want to recognize their efforts. Want to talk about, briefly, about a...
Mr. Alt House? I know, but he, he wanted to speak. We thought you deferred your time, because he went nine minutes. I'm just, it's your meeting. I'm just going to...
Yeah, I have to apologize, we thought that...
I just had a minute.
Yep, come on up, I'm sorry. We allowed him to go over by several minutes, because we thought you were all deferring your time.
No, I understand completely.
Thank you.
I just want to start by saying, you know, obviously, we're all here on this cold February evening, you know, to sit here and talk about the children that we serve here in this district. And, you know, sometimes conversations are obviously not always easy, sometimes they can be, you know, difficult. You know, when Mr. Finelli spoke tonight, he talked about, talked about, you know, resources that are necessary for children to, you know, best, you know, receive education for science and social studies in the sixth grade. You know, I think that, as, you know, President of the Teachers, School, and Professionals Association, you know, and, you know, obviously, hearing concerns of faculty, just like that's important to you, it's obviously important to us, as, as a union. And I think we can use this simply as an opportunity to figure out how we can, you know, work collectively to come up with what's best for the kids that we serve here in Elville. And I just wanted to add that, so, I apologize, I will not take any more of the time that I've set up for.
No, no, no. I just want to reassure you, Mr. Alt House, that it is the mission of this board, and certainly, the goals and objectives of this administration, is to not do any finger-pointing here. We look to work forward collaboratively, to, for the sake of the children, and certainly for the professionals in this district, and we want to provide them with the best resources and best materials possible for any type of curriculum, and we look forward to working with you on matters of mutual concern in the future. And we look forward to working with you on matters of mutual concern in the future, as always.
We're clearly on the same page, I think. Take care.
And as I was saying, I received a, we received a letter from Mayor Kaplan. It was addressed to the Ellenville School Board, also to the superintendent. Basically requesting that he would like to have a meeting with several different factions in the village and town, the Town of Worthing, the Village of School District Chamber, Commerce, Roundup Business Association, local real estate brokers, and other interested parties, and also have it open to the public. Basically talking about, you know, how we can better market the Ellenville, Worthing areas, certainly the school districts, and dealing with some of the, whether it's, you know, some of the unfair, what I feel is some of the unfair media scrutiny that we've received, you know, over the years and certainly some unfair and without backup support that to talk about how, you know, people have, there's been some unfair raps to our district and also to the community and what she actually mentioned. So without, you know, just trying to, how can we better, not even sell ourselves, but present ourselves and say, "We're not a bad district here. We're not, you know, none of this community, our community, the Town of Worthing communities, unlike any other community or any other district with the same type of problems, you know, that everybody else has." Why do they get magnified? Well, one example of this would be certainly this document that I have in my hand was on the internet and it talks about the 47 worst school districts in upstate New York as graded in 2018. You know, Chuck Corey, the superintendent, the district superintendent rather for Ulster County, he responded to this and certainly I appreciate his letter because he straightened this out. You know, Ellenville is identified as number 20. What is, you know, anytime you do a statistical analysis, statistical research, you have to look at what the criteria that was used. What is the data to support this and what are the factors that support this? And certainly, how do we arrive at the conclusions? What's the hypothesis for this? And certainly, is it supported by any statistical data? And, you know, you could put this out, you know, you put this headline out. Forty-seven worst school districts in upstate New York graded in 2018, right? It goes on the internet. All of a sudden, it becomes gospel because people see the headlines. Now it's gospel. Well, I got to tell you that that is the furthest thing from the truth here. And certainly, Mr. Chuck Corey represents that in his letter. He says frankly, quote-unquote, "This is a distortion of the truth." And, you know, in reviewing their published methodology for determining each school's rankings, the publishers indicate that in every one of the eight categories ranked for the factors considered included survey responses on academics, teacher-school culture, diversity, overall experience, school environment, facilities, clubs, activities, athletics, athletic facilities, students, and parents. So when you look at these reports, it can be noted that six reviews of these districts, only 37 scores were used in formulating their opinion on, in part and parcel, on Ellenville's overall effectiveness as a school district. Thirty-seven. How many students do we have in this district?
Sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred. So if we were looking at seniors, how many in the senior class?
Probably a hundred and a quarter, right? Between, about 125.
So between the junior class and the senior class of these 37 scores that he used, that the publisher uses in this and takes great liberties to use them. I mean, you have to see the statistical analysis. He left out, you know, those responses were only for 37 people.
Of the high schools.
Of the high schools. So 300, you know, between junior and senior high schools, about 300 students. So you can look at those percentages and see how easily they can be, you know, certainly can be construed and certainly how these are skewed. These numbers are definitely, you know, skewed because they do not take into consideration all of the population. So when you do a sample population for statistical analysis, you have to look at the overall population, plus or minus a few percent in error, not just what you want to and what you've been given to as a result of the survey. So you can, and then you come up with your own headlines. And then the other part of this is there were no reviews for the Ellenville Middle School or Ellenville Elementary School at all. Yet the headline was Ellenville School District. So you also have to look at the fact that there was no mention of how the participants were obtained through, how they would suggest, since real estate advertising is part of the website, the individuals in the community were considering moving, but for whatever reason, were directed to the site to enter their own opinions, not by fact, but by opinion in some of these cases. So these things, these, this data is certainly not the, I mean, these, this overall analysis for this article was not, is not supported by fact. It's not supported by actual, for that matter, a true sample of our population and what represents our true district. So unfortunately, that's out there. So that's part and parcel of what we have to look at and how we can, and I'm glad that Superintendent Corey took the time to respond to that because we need to get that out there, you know. We need to, we need to make sure that the information that's out there is vetted and accurate. And certainly, as I just quoted to you, that was not the case. The publishers in this story took great liberties to distort the truth. And that's unfortunate because we have to suffer the consequences of their actions. But, you know, we want to reply to that and we will stand by this district. There are great things. There are great educators in this district. There are great students that have come from this district, that are currently in this district and that will, for a long time to come, go forward in this district and become great assets and outstanding members to our communities and to our states at large. We are, you get what you put into education and, you know, you reap what you sow. And I just want to, and I'm emphatic about this. I think that we need to remember that this district has produced some of the finest in our community and around the state in contributing members to our society. And a lot of great athletes, great academic people that have come out of this, just like Raymond Matthews.
And the veterinarian you were talking about.
Touche. But certainly, we have some outstanding members there. So with that, I'll get off my soapbox for this evening. And I will just say that certainly do not always pay, you know, look beyond the information. There's a saying I took from a senior investigator who passed away, senior investigator Larry Grogan. His son Sean is a very active member, retired member of the State Police. He used to say, "You gotta, you gotta see the forest through the trees, mad dog." And that, and that took, I took that to heart a long time. You gotta see the forest through the trees. And that's certainly true. Anytime you see something, just don't look at it at face value and say, "And this is quoted as truth," because it's not. You have to research it. You have to know where it came from. And certainly, I would think that that would apply to all the responsible journalists across the globe. With that, I must say that, I apologize that I have to leave early and I'm going to turn the chair over to our Vice President, Iris Freeman. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, so reports, information, correspondence.
Madam Vice President? I'm sorry. I just had a, I had a question regarding the response from Dr. Corey and a couple of questions about what our action would be, if there is any action, whether or not we would be communicating with the publisher of NYU or NISH or if there's any recourse, providing comments on their site or anything endorsing or disputing the claims made in this report here.
I'd like to ask Superintendent Wiles to respond to that, please.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem discussing that with Dr. Corey. There was another Ulster County school. I'm not mentioning their names because I don't think it's appropriate after we saw what this... And there's some other area schools that were noted in here too. Can I ask Dr. Corey and we'll discuss what we think is the best recourse? For me, I, you can't get this taken down off the internet.
Right.
And I really don't want to engage and make this any bigger or make their report any bigger than it is because it's just so off and it's just, you know, such a misleading document for all the schools involved. But let us talk as superintendents and see if we want to engage in that as a group.
Please, Madam Superintendent, because people should not be allowed to make statements in public that are not accurate without recourse.
You know, I just want to make one other comment to that. I think that that comment is so important in today's world. So we have social media, we have the internet, and more and more at the national level, at the international level, at our local level, we hear about this information that just appears. And as it appears, it's just taken as the truth. And I think as citizens, especially for our students, maybe it's something that really needs to be focused on, not just reading it and taking it for face value, but inquiring, inquiry, the whole process and skill of inquiry. Where did this information come from? Is it, because when I first read it, I said, "I don't understand this report." And I started digging and I called my resource and Dr. Curry is so supportive. And I said, "Can you, am I missing something here? Can you look into this also between the two of us?" It just appeared to be what it was. So I think your point is well-taken and I think everybody needs to question what they see on social media. Just because somebody says something, you know, very often people say something and then quote it as the truth or quote it as a fact. And it should be all about inquiry and finding out where the source of a survey is done or who's funding the survey or the research. I think that's very important. But we will look into that and see if, see if we'll respond as a group or individually.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Mr. Burns?
Thank you. You know, Ms. Wiles, this is nothing more than social media garbage and I'll just give you a couple of examples. There were 47 schools that were rated. Forty-two received a C and five received a C minus. So if you have the 47 worst school districts in upstate New York, somebody's getting Ds and Fs and that didn't happen. Another example is that one school had a graduation rate of 92%, which is outstanding.
Yes.
And they received a C. And another district had a graduation rate of 56% and they received a C. So personally, I don't, we can't take this back off the social media.
No, no.
But I don't think it's worth responding to. We know what we have here in the district.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anyone else? Board member concerns? Wayne?
Not a concern, but speaking of good things in the district, I'd really like to thank the middle school and congratulate the middle school academy for the Willy Wonka Junior Show. It was really well-attended. They did a great job. The students always do a great job. The music department, Mrs. Gillette, Mr. Trombley, Andy Walter, Holly Budd, the parents that come and do the makeup and build the sets. It's just, it's really a great thing to watch. It's great to watch it happen from the beginning to the end. And they should all be complimented. It was really a great show.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, our student representative, Mr. Lamandola.
Hello.
Hello.
So this week in the high school, it is Spirit Week. Today, it was 80s and 90s Day and they played Music Between Bells, which was very, very interesting. This Thursday will be a pep rally for the winter sports. Last, the last few weeks, the girls' track team made Ellenville history by winning a Division IV banner. And then in the coming weeks, there'll be musical auditions for the Addams Family, which we will be putting on in high school. And then also, if you, I'll give you guys one of these if you want one. They are, each class is going to make a class banner with their year. And if you guys want to go down Thursday and vote on who has a better one. That'll be it.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Wiles, do you have more to say this evening?
I do have a few other things, just some reminders. On February 22nd, we have our board docs training. We'll have computers available for your use and for you to take. Mrs. Doria will follow up with you on the time and the location and how we'll proceed. I just want to also remind you, and I'll do it at the next board meeting also, on March 1st, there'll be a community presentation and forum that's been co-sponsored by our school district, but more importantly, by the Keldar Foundation. And we will have a speaker here. His name is Chris Heron. He is a former Boston Celtics NBA player and he is going to discuss his experience with addiction and recovery. And he has done a program like this in Kingston. It's been very powerful. He'll be here during the day speaking to our students about his struggles through addiction and recovery. So I would really encourage everyone to come out on March 1st, 6:00. There'll be a community reception and then at 6:30, the program will start promptly. I want to tell the board and congratulate the varsity boys' basketball team. We'll have more of an update on all the teams. But next Wednesday, they will be playing in the Mahal Championship at Ulster County Community College. I do not have the time, but I will have Mrs. Doria get that information to you. It'll be at the college and I think it's around 6:00, but we'll make sure you get that information. And also in the packet, on Monday, April 9th, Ulster Bosse's will be having their annual meeting at Port Huen. That's a really great meeting to go to. They do the full presentation of the Bosse's budget, programs of Bosse's. And what's really nice about it, it's held at the Votech Center and the culinary students prepare dinner for the board members that attend. So it's a great evening and, you know, we've had students in the past participate in that. And if you have the opportunity and the time, I would encourage, highly encourage that you try to get there. It's an excellent evening and that's all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli?
Thank you. Outside of what I have in print, there's nothing more that I would like to report on. If anyone would like to ask me any questions about what's in my report, I'd be happy to entertain any of them.
Mr. Napoli, I had a couple of questions regarding the air conditioner analysis that you provided for the board in the packet. Just want to make sure that I'm reading the information correctly and that I'm breaking it down correctly here. If I look at, I'm looking for a total initial cost. So if I look at the AC cost row and total that at the bottom, I come to $72,400.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Bruce. Are you on the last page or...?
I'm on the last page of the, yes, the last page of the analysis that Mr. Napoli put together for us.
Thank you.
Did you say $74,000?
$72,400.
I don't know where, I don't know where you're getting that number from.
I'm taking the AC cost column and totaling it. Is that, is that not accurate?
That is, that is not the true initial cost. So if we take, there's a lot of costs that are involved in putting an air conditioner in a classroom.
Okay.
So one of them is the actual cost of the unit. The other one is the cost of putting a 220 line in a classroom if there currently isn't any electrical power to support the unit. There's also the cost, I'll call this a soft cost, but there's the labor cost of having the guys install the unit, fabricate some type of frame so that the window can not expel any warm or cool air in or out, kind of like you do in your home. Some of our windows are not designed in such a way that would easily take an air conditioner.
Okay.
So what I've done is if you go all the way off to the right, there's the new initial cost of $109,000. I've added all of those costs up
Great.
to estimate approximately what it would cost in hard dollars to put an air conditioner in all the remaining classrooms.
Okay. So the total is plus or minus $109 for the initial cost. And then we have a yearly operational cost of about $16,000.
Correct.
Okay. And the design team, the new design team is working on an order of magnitude number to provide air conditioning packaged units and delivery for this?
We are meeting with our new architects on Thursday to talk about their building condition survey that they recently completed for us. We're going to be asking them at that time to come up with a design for rolling out air conditioners outside of a window unit, a standalone unit, whether it be a mini-split duct or a full-blown chiller unit, swapping out the univentilators and putting a full-blown system in. We can certainly ask them to, you know, to do that on Thursday.
Great, okay. And will they provide, can you ask them to provide different options for that packaged install? Is it like, this is all-inclusive and you can break it down according to whatever areas you like to break it, you would like to break it down to? Can we ask them to do a similar analysis to provide, not just say, "Yeah, if you AC all of these areas, it'll cost you $4 million bucks." But if you AC these areas and this areas, just look at it that way?
You mean like phase it in, to phase in over...
Yeah, so that was one of our, with this whole project, with this whole building conserve, survey that we're doing
and also the other areas of improvement that we'd like to see. We're hoping to put it up for a referendum in the late fall, early winter next year. There's a lot of work to be done between now and then. But when we do put it up, put it up in phases. So if it's, just going to say, if it's another $14 million project, we divide it up over a period of time and say, "This year, the elementary will get the air conditioning. Next year, middle school." And that's not the only thing that'll happen, obviously.
Sure, sure.
And how it's packaged and all of that moving forward is going to be important too. So yes, that's the plan. This is going, I think, from what I heard from the board over the last couple of months, we're proceeding with this with a, as a temporary fix. And then, and I don't know, that's kind of where we were. And then moving forward, this will be the replace, we'll be replacing this with the bigger scope and the bigger picture. That's the direction that, you know, we had taken.
If I had to comment on this? I am, I'm a little concerned about it being a temporary fix. I think that we need to look for a permanent fix because it's a permanent problem. It's not going to get any better over time. It's not going to get any better over time, whether climate change exists or not. We have, it's, it's apparent to me that, you know, ninety degrees today is very different than what it was fifteen or twenty years ago. And I also realize that we have a situation where we now have computers in classrooms and computers generate a great deal of heat, too. So that just ups the, the, the heat also. I would like to give the architecture or design people an opportunity to analyze what they would suggest how we go forward. You know, there are really three choices. You can get window air conditioners, you can get split air conditioners, and you can get full central air. And I'd like, I'm really interested in looking at split air conditioners. There's sort of, it's the middle of the road between the three choices. And I really do have a very hard time spending a hundred and eight thousand dollars for a temporary fix, you know? So I guess we'll just have to wait and see when they present the information as we go forward and how we want to move on this. That's what I'm hearing. Mr. Burns?
Vince, didn't we decide that central air was just too exorbitant to consider?
We, we had originally discussed that when we went out for the first capital, or the capital project we're in right now. It would be, at the time, it would be about two and a half million dollars per building to do that. And that, that was before we replaced the univentilators. We would have to retrofit the univentilators we have now. So in, in the order of dollar value, the cheapest approach is the window unit. And then it goes from there, it goes to the splits, the minis. A school in Green County put it in at a cost of thirteen thousand dollars per classroom. You have to have it engineered, you have to have it installed, the electric has, so there's a whole involved process with that. And they paid about thirteen thousand dollars per, per classroom. And then the other one is the, the full-blown central air, as Iris put it, which is in the millions of dollars per building. So those are the three and they go, dollar, cost-wise, they start at, in the order that we presented them.
And, Mr. Burns, I'd just like to also say that I think that if we go with either one of those, it really should be packaged in a capital project so we can maximize ours' building aid on it. So if you spend a million dollars, you get six hundred and seventy thousand dollars back on it, supposed to just coming, I don't know how we would come out of pocket a million dollars or six million dollars with the tax cap and, you know, the state of the revenues that we have.
Is, would this expenditure be eligible for aid?
No. You have to have a, for capital projects, you have to have a separate referendum for built, to get building aid. It has to be voter-approved. The only exception to that is in the budget. Every year, we have a capital outlay of a hundred thousand dollars that can be used, but you have to, that has to be voted on at the budget. If the budget goes up and it's in there, it passes. You still have the obligation to submit all your plans to State Ed prior to any of the work happening.
Thank you.
If we were, if we were to go ahead with this, how long would it take us to have that done?
You know, I've been struggling with the answer to that question. You know, I've got five mechanics, they're all pretty busy now. Just to take the window units out in the fall and to put them in, in preparation for the warmer weather come springtime, April fifteenth is what we shoot for. We never hit it because inevitably, the, the weather gets warm and the teams want to start practice, we got to get the fields ready. So, you know, I don't know how long it would take. These are, there's a lot of units here and what I would suggest is that we, with some type of a, a bid out to have a company come in and do it for us. I don't have the manpower to be able to do this.
Well, I only ask because I believe there's only a month, month and a half before the heat rises back on us. And it's not something that we can have somebody design, have, and figure out the time for them to put in if we, if we go with, even if we were to go with central air. By the time, it's two years down the road, by the time we got somebody to do it. The only now aspect that we have is the window units. And how long we need them? If we, by the way it works, five years down the road, we may be ready to spend the money, to spend our summer putting in central air or whatever. But I think it's something, we've already experienced the time to where the heat was running us out of the classrooms. I don't believe we can go through another year facing that. It's not fair to the teachers or to the students. So I think it's something we need to kind of solve quickly. And the quickest way to do it is with this recommendation. If you want to go and find somebody that can come and do it for us and do it for us in a time, then I, I would rather take that expense and do what we need to do than have us moaning and groaning next summer or next winter because the teachers and the children were fainting with too much heat. So I think it's something we need to look at quickly and move quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Wayne?
Mr. Napoli, how many classrooms do we have in the building, the buildings?
I don't have that record with me. I believe it's about a hundred and thirty-two.
So it's one point seven million dollars for the split units at thirteen thousand dollars a, a classroom. So again, I'm not sure what the, what the best resolution is for us to do, but I can tell you that, being someone who has been in several classrooms, and it was actually in October that I was in a classroom and I raised this concern, and the classroom being at ninety degrees at, at eight-thirty in the morning is a huge concern. So, you know, I think we have to move forward with this unless we're going to spend the one point four million dollars into the split units. But I think we have to do it pretty quickly because I agree with Reverend Collins. We've been talking about this for, for several years and we really need to do something because we can't expect our staff to teach in those conditions and we certainly can't expect our students to learn in those conditions. And that's just, that's just where I'm at, I think. But I think whatever we do, we need to do pretty quickly. And I think if we're going to do these window units and have a company come in and do it, that would be fine as well.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mrs. Vice President. Mr. Napoli, what is the cost for the crew, the five mechanics that you have to work on a Saturday, roughly?
That's if I can get them to work.
Sure.
I can't mandate them to work.
Assuming, assuming, assuming that they'd be willing to work. Plus or minus, Mr. Napoli. I don't want to, I don't want to.
Don't do it on the mast, Reese. Don't do it, Reese.
Yeah, so five guys, one day, it'll, I would say the cost of labor, payroll, everything is roughly four thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Napoli, we're also hindered a little bit by the age of the buildings and the different windows, isn't that true?
Absolutely right. So I will tell you that some windows, we can do fabrication of the, either the plexi or the plywood that would have to go in it, we could do it in fifteen minutes, right? But inevitably, you're going to run into a window that's crooked or that's not working right and they got to make five trips to the hardware store to get the equipment.
Or they, or they.
Yeah, well, yeah, those, that's the plexiglass. So I'm using fifteen minutes on average. You know, some guy cutting, some guy notching it out, and some guy screwing it in, and two guys putting it in. Sometimes it takes longer. I know I've put window units in my house and it could take me sometimes a half hour because something gets stuck and you're pulling on it and, so that's on average.
Any other comments on the subject? All right. Can we move on then to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction? Mrs. Urbina Medina?
I just want to draw your attention to something that I had in my board report, which is, My Brothers Keeper Enhanced After-School Course Offerings, long title. In March, I'll be presenting on the My Brothers Keeper grant and where we are and what's going on and how we're spending the money and what kind of activities are taking place. We'll provide you with an overview of the work that's taken place thus far, what we have mapped out. But something exciting that's been going on this month and will continue through the month of February and into the early part of March, and then hopefully into the spring, are courses that have been developed and generated by interest of, of the adults in our school community. Teachers and administrators who have said, hey, I'd like to teach a course and are doing so on a voluntary basis. There are four course offerings that are taking place right now. They range from English Conversation, so those are the courses, perhaps you're new to the English language and you need some practice with conversation. Circle of Courage, which is led by Mr. Frank Mulhern, and Bitcoins. I know that we've all heard about Bitcoins and Mr. Faduk is teaching a course on cryptocurrency and Bitcoins. I am teaching a course with Mrs. Kelly White and we have filled all of the seats in our class. We have standing room only. We are actually doing a lot of gloating because we're beating all of the other courses in terms of their enrollment.
Yeah, but you have food.
That's true. That is true.
I gave you up.
That's true. That's true.
Good food.
Yes. Our class is no-bake desserts. And that's true, we do have food and the students get to take home some of what they've made with them. And it was a big hit. We have another class on Thursday of this week and then two more in the month of February. What's really neat about it is the fact that all of these ideas were generated by the adults in our school community who have interest in sharing something and interest or something that they think is interested, interesting to them, that they'd like to share with other students, and we've made that happen. There are other teachers and other adults in the school community that have expressed interest in other course offerings. So we're in the process of putting together some, a, a, a spring course catalog for March and into April. But it's really very exciting. Just another item that I wanted to update you on. So the, the middle school this year was identified with a local assistance plan for student participation and New York State assessments. We were tagged for our opt-outs. We fell below the average of ninety-five percent over three-year average. I'm working with Mr. Spinelli, the middle school principal, on drafting a letter to send to parents of students who did not participate in the sixteen-seventeen New York State testing and also the fifteen-sixteen round of state testing to encourage them to participate and reengage in the process. We're, we're trying to do damage control on what was a sort of botched rollout of the Common Core and the pairing of student performance with teacher performance that took place years back. And parents, many of them as a protest, decided not to have their children participate in state testing. But the fact of the matter is that a lot has changed since then. And it's important for us to share that message and provide that information to everyone so that they understand that their students and their children are not participating in the same test as it existed six years ago. The tests, the number of days have been reduced from three days to two days this year. The math and ELA cycles are only two days each. The, the options on how students can test, you have computer-based testing taking place now, which has gone along seamlessly and hopefully will continue to. And we also have the questions of the assessments being written by real, live teachers. So it's a lot more reflective of what actually goes on in the classroom and it's important for parents to understand that this is important process for the students to reengage in. So we'll be sending out a letter and we're also going to be holding an informational meeting evening with probably some no-bake desserts and to get parents in, to talk about the state testing and hoping, hopefully to get them reconnected back in, in the process. So you can look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burns?
Yes, Angel, I think that the problem with this state testing, that people have that taste in their mouth, that it, it's the same old thing, no matter how they, they spin it around. I'm personally offended that the governor has given districts a certain amount of time to get their testing participants up. Most teachers can do a final exam in a couple of hours on a full year and yet we're still taking two days to test our kids in ELA and math. So I, I think that's a problem and I don't know if, if there's any lobbying we can do to try and get the state to understand that. The second part here was congratulations on your no-bake and filling up your classes. But I believe board policy would dictate that these must be improved, so if you could deliver several of these M and M. I'm pretty sure I could get you board-approved.
I have to give, I have to give credit to Kelly White. This was her idea and she asked me would I participate with her and I said, yes, I, I will assist. And, and one of the conditions of the, the instruction of the class had to do with the uniform that we had to wear. So if you stop by the classroom, you'll not only be able to enjoy a delicious no-bake dessert, but we do have some pretty fly-looking aprons, too.
Mrs. Little?
Yes. When we have the informational session for parents to come in with the state testing and trying to explain to them the change that has been made, can maybe we can have a few students speak on how they, the change has impacted them and how the testing has changed?
Sure. Thank you. I had a conversation today, I was working with some elementary teachers at Bosse's about also using the PTO. One of the teachers shared, which I thought was a fabulous idea, that sometimes parents are leery about the motivations of the school district because we do have a vested interest. But having other parents who have had their and allowed their children to participate in state testing, talking to them, you know, kind of parent-to-parent, might ease some of the worries and anxiety that they might have.
I agree. Yeah. Anyone else?
Okay, so it's on to the resolutions. Superintendent of Schools recommends that following appointments be resolved where applicable, such appointments are conditioned among the district's receipt of clearance for employment from the State Education Department relating to the fingerprinting and criminal history record check personnel eight point one point one. That the co-curricular personnel as set forth on the list below be approved at the contractual rate listed for the twenty, for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
Move the list as presented.
Second.
Okay, okay. Any discussion?
Did we or did we not speak about this and approve these at our last meeting?
That's what I thought.
No, we, we created the clubs. Then we had to post and we just created the clubs. We did not appoint a, the advisors.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm in favor, I'm sorry.
So we're, we're, Willie?
I'm in favor. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was, I was still thinking about two weeks ago on that one. Okay, thank you.
So it's unanimous. Eight point one point two, that the appointment of Justine Avery, clerk-type, is to be made permanent following a successful probationary period of six months effective February twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Eight point one point three, that the appointment of Sarah Walter, local area network technician, be made permanent following a successful probationary period of six months effective February twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Eight point one point four, that Anna Burneki's resolution dated one twenty-three eighteen be amended to read as follows. Who holds a professional New York State certificate in students with disabilities grade seven through twelve, be appointed to a three-year probationary position of special education teacher and in the tenure areas of special education effective February twelfth, two thousand eighteen through February twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, at a contractual rate of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, step seven bachelor's plus forty-two plus masters. Be it further resolved that to the extent applicable under education law section thirty twelve D and the accompanying commissioners regulations, in order to be considered for tenure, Anna Burneki must have received an APPR rating of effective or highly effective in two of the three probationary years and must not receive an ineffect- and must not receive an ineffective in the final year.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Eight point one point five, that the following coaches' spring be approved as indicated for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
Motion to move the list?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor. Eight point one point six, that Samantha Corio be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of ninety-five dollars per day worked for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor. Eight point one point seven, that Crystal Caban and Nadia Mulvahill be appointed home tutors at a contractor, contractual rate of fifty-five dollars per hour worked for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Eight point one point eight, that the following teachers be appointed for an additional twenty-four hours of regents review at a contractual rate of fifty-five dollars per hour worked per subject for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, let's see. Eight point two point one, resolve that this be considered the first reading of the following six thousand and seven thousand policies.
Motion to move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, Budget is Consent Agenda, eight point three point.
Vice President, I move eight, eight point three point one and eight point three point two.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, Legal, there are no resolutions. Education?
Motion to move eight point five one, eight point five two, and eight point five three.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Construction?
Motion to move eight point six one through eight point six eight.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam, madam Vice President, I hate to harp on this, but I'm still a little concerned about the amount of time it's taking to close, uh, the phase one construction cost items out completely. And in light of the correspondence that we received from our construction manager, uh, I, I would ask that, um, the construction manager expedite the process because, uh, it seems that we've run out of time.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Is that something that Mr. Napoli would like to address, or?
So I, I can, what I don't provide the board is the backup detail. I give you a copy of the invoice because the board has asked me not to provide all the backup for the app, for the applications. So I will be certain happy to provide that, and you will actually see the timeline from when the pencil copy goes in, when it gets reviewed by the architect and the construction manager, because it's not always being held up at the construction manager or at the architect. It could be that the contractor is taking their time getting it, and then it has to go to Detroit or Albany, then it's gotta go to the construction manager, manager, and then come to me, then two weeks later. So there's always going to be a lag and a delay. I can't speak to the specifics on any of these, um, but I can certainly, you know, make copies of these and provide them to you so you can see the, the timeline. But they are aware, the construction manager and the architect, they are aware that the board wants to make the payments in a timely manner, that we don't want to hold up any payments to the contractors.
Well, at this point, Mr. Napoli, the board, uh, and not speaking for the board, but as a board member, I would want to wrap up the process at this point, seeing as how we're on the clock, so to speak. Again, in light of the correspondence that we received, and we don't have a delineation of where there's additional cost and where we've already purchased their services.
I understand.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Other?
Motion to move eight point seven one, eight point seven two, and eight point seven three.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And that is the end of our resolutions for, uh, this week. Just to remind you, February twentieth is our next budget workshop, and February twenty-seventh is our next regular meeting. Any other, um, information or on the agenda?
Yes, I, I had asked a couple of weeks back if we could consider possibly moving the board meetings back to the elementary school where we could have more room to spread out and, uh, and see. And, uh, the president said that he would get back to me on that. So I was wondering if we could take a consideration of that.
We could, but the problem that we have is that the televising is all, it sinks right back into the broadcasting booth. So I don't know, we, we can look at it and see what that would cost.
If we can't do it, then I'd remove my request providing we can turn the thermostat up a little bit. Thank you.
It's a good provising, Tom, thanks.
Please.
Anything else?
Madam Vice President, I'd like to, an update, uh, we had discussed previously an initiative, uh, in, in the, in the high school here that we named Bosse's Night. And I'd like to know where that stands, an update on that. Uh, I'd like to know where the infomercial for the Bosse's program is, where that sits. Uh, we had discussed the Facebook page. I'd like to understand, uh, where that, where that is in the, in the process. We talked about, uh, out of dis, out of district tuition. I'd like to know how much progress the attorneys have made, if any at all. And I saw, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Is there anything else, folks? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Very good.